Okay, good evening and thank you for joining us on our March 22 Board of Education meeting. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I will turn it over to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our March 22 Board of Education meeting. For the time being, we are continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube live. This past Friday, we held our final superintendent's conference day for the 2021-2022 school year. Thank you to Dr. Murray for putting together an incredible program. For today, faculty and staff gathered at all five schools to attend sessions dedicated to work around the New York State Cultural Response and Sustaining Education Framework, data-driven instruction, Orton-Gillingham lesson design, and collaborative curriculum writing. They also spent some time engaging in wellness sessions led by teachers and administrators from across the district. On April 6th through 8th, the district will be hosting a visit for members of the tri-state consortium. The tri-state consortium is an organization of 48 regional school districts committed to collaborative inquiry and continuous school improvement. The district rejoined the consortium in 2019 to further the work we are doing in the areas of curriculum and instruction. As part of our membership, a team visits us every three years and focuses on an area of our choosing. For our visit in April, they will be focusing on professional learning and our efforts over these past five years. Over the course of the three days, the visiting team is here. They will be observing in classrooms, joining professional learning sessions, and conducting focus groups with students, teachers, administrators, staff developers, and parents. On the final day, the visiting team will give us an overview of their collective insights, takeaways, and recommendations, and these will all be shared with the entire faculty following the visit. So there'll be much more information underway, but we hope that the board will, there are slots for interviews and focus groups with board members, and we hope that the board will join the consultancy on Friday, and we'll be sending you that schedule. And the 2022-2023 Budget Roadshow is underway. This past Saturday, we held our Community Budget Cafe right here in the Rye Middle School multipurpose room with tables set up for members of the community to come and ask questions of our administrators. We had seven tables focusing on athletics, elementary schools, middle and high school, operations and maintenance, special education and PPS, staffing and professional development, and technology. I wish to thank the members of the community who came out to join us and for the board members and administrators who took the time to be here early on a Saturday morning. And now, after tonight, we'll be taking the show on the road, starting with a visit to Rye Rotary on Friday, followed by a visit to the Osborne Community Synagogue, the Rye Rec Seniors Group, the Lions Club, and the Chamber of Commerce, just to name a few, in addition to the parent organization groups and any other groups that we can connect with between now and May 17. This coming Friday is the combined Rye Middle School-High School Social, the first in-person social for our middle and high school parents since January of 2020. It's being held at Coveley Club. If you're not able to attend, please consider making a donation to the parent organizations who provide so much support to our schools. There is also an online silent auction for those who can't make it in person but want to be in on the bidding action for some amazing vacation homes and experiences. Our COVID case numbers are reflective of the current low case numbers in the community. We've had 20 reported cases in the district since our last board meeting on the 8th of March. We've changed our case reporting from every other weeknight to once per week as part of my Friday community update, and we're only sending health reminders once per week versus the daily that we were doing. And I know everyone's inboxes will thank me for changing that communication. And I didn't even realize we did this, and we were tallying the numbers, but we distributed more than 3,800 COVID test kits to community groups who we learned about from, we had sent a letter out a few weeks ago to the community, and we got emails back connecting us with groups that were in desperate need of COVID tests. And thank you to those who reached out, because 3,800 test kits have gone to the Women's Club of Rye, Rye Presbyterian Church, the Carver Center, Open Door in Portchester, and other organizations throughout the local area. And on Thursday, we got 14 more boxes of tests, so we're going to continue reaching out to our neighbors and organizations to offer supplies as we can. I'm sure I'm going to get in trouble with somebody in Albany for this, but to me, I'd rather see them used by community members than see them expire in a closet at Central Office. Plus, Gabby's going to need to rent more space soon if we don't get rid of some of these tests. So either that or I'll be driving around with them in my car by the case. But that is my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. And of course, any parents in the community that need any, obviously just need to call the district office or go to the principals at their schools and can pick up if they are in need.
We have all the tests you need.
Yes. Great. So hopefully, we'll be able to reach lots of people with the Budget Roadshow that will continue on, and we were really thankful, like you said, for the community members who came out to ask questions and connect on this year's budget.
And we did, Rob Camigliano did lead some tours here at the high school, middle school. We got to go into boiler rooms and open doors where there's ventilation equipment that now functions that never did, or at least not in the last 30 years. It was very exciting. And there will be tours, I know Gabby and Rob are working on a schedule for tours for all of the buildings to see the Capital Project work and how far we've come in that work so far. So that is to come as well.
Great. Okay, moving on to Presentation Discussion One, which is a review of the proposed budget for the 2022-23 school year.
All right. So this is going to look quite familiar. So this is a budget presentation that we've done several times, but for those of you that recall, we did change our process a couple of years ago. And I just want to thank all the administrators that came out and did presentations. I think they're incredibly informational and valuable for the community as well as the board over these past few weeks. So we're just going to, as part of the budget adoption process, and there is a resolution adopting the budget this evening to bring to the community. We'll just go through that presentation once more. It does have, and we did present these same changes at the last meeting, so any additional questions or thoughts? But if we take a look at what the proposed budget is, the approved budget that we are in in this year is $94,237,421. We are planning for a budget-to-budget increase of 5.56%, and the tax levy increase is different. We will get to that further. And the proposed budget is a total of $99,477,734.
This slide indicates the 12 categories that we typically see in any of our presentations on how the budget is broken down. Categories one and two being salaries and benefits, which is 78% of the overall budget, then general education, special education, athletics, technology, curriculum development, transportation, district-wide support, that's all the behind-the-scenes stuff, facilities, debt service, and inter-fund transfers.
And so as we look at, and this is a slide that was new to the presentation this year because we felt like it was really important for the community and the board to understand that the significant shifts in the budget are in a few key areas. The first being the benefits, and this includes the health benefits, the pension systems for ERS, which is our smaller pension system, and TRS. And that increase is $1.27 million. So when you're thinking about a $5.2 million increase, this is where the bulk of it sits. It's the benefits. The debt service increase, so if you recall, when we brought the Capital Project proposal to the community, we talked about three years when we would have notable increases to the budget due to payments, increased payments to debt service. So this is on the borrowing of the money to do the construction. So this is year one. It's actually come a year early because we've been able to accomplish so much in terms of the projects, and that is an increase in our debt service payment of $1.1 million. So you've got your 1.27, 1.1, and then in salaries, these are our contractual obligations. And so each of our contracts are negotiated with all of our bargaining units, and this includes the increases that come according to the salary schedules. It also includes the net increases in staff, because as you'll see later on, we have a few additional positions that we're adding for programs and services, but it also has, it reflects the decreases in those positions. But the salaries includes all of the contractual increases as well of the new positions, and that's $1.65 million. In special education, you see, when you look at the line item budget, that there is an increase of $900,000. And what you're really seeing here is a shift in how we're representing, it's not an increase with $900,000 in new programs, but it's an increase in support for students across the spectrum, for students that may require high-level medical support in a school placement. And what we've learned from our auditors with recommendations, we have been using funding from many different sources within the budget. We have, that's now the recommendation, that that lives in one place in the special education budget. So we've isolated, the $900,000 increase has been isolated from other areas of the budget in order to have the funding dedicated in advance for meeting our students' needs in special education programming. And in addition, included in this is our continued commitment to mental health services of $350,000. And that's a budget item because it covers part of the cost to continue the services with effective school solutions. And just to remind all who are here this evening and watching, ESS has been providing Tier One and Two supports and some Tier Three, Tier Two and Tier Three supports for students, so counseling and support services. And next year, they'll be providing those support services at the middle school and the high school, and they will be supporting a new program called the Therapeutic Support Services, which is to help kids who are struggling with emotional needs at the middle school and high school. So there'll be some transition support that they do, but they'll actually be helping kids that may be coming from a medical placement or just having an increased need. And as we know, we've talked about this a lot, and I've written about this a lot to the governor and the commissioners of health and education, the mental health crisis among young people is real. It is here in Rye, it is everywhere, and having the ability to keep these increased mental health services in the school district in addition to the incredible services and mental health support we're receiving from the community, from Rye Youth Council, from Rye Act, and our partners out in Rye, is really, really important. And it also included in this is the additional counselor at the elementary level. So as you recall, we proposed adding a second counselor to work with Rosie Bracadetta, who focuses on K through 2. We'll also have in the proposal is an additional counselor to partner with Rosie, and that's part of this increase here. So when you look at, these are really sort of the big increases and the big shifts in the budget. And just to highlight those staffing, so you'll see the school counselor is in addition at the elementary level, and then you'll see some decreases. So based on need and enrollment, we have one reduction at the elementary level. We have a decrease of .6 math, but it's actually a swap because there's an increase of .6 for tech ed, which is for building out the new engineering pathway at the high school. In addition, there's an increase of .2 physical education at the high school, but there's a corresponding decrease of .2. So one of PE at the middle school. One of the things that we always do is we look at our course offerings, our course enrollments, our grade level enrollments across the elementary schools, and you know, you don't just always add, there are reductions that come because you have things that you're not offering on a particular year, or you have a grade level that has a lower enrollment, and you make those shifts. So we often see that you have a grade level that may have four teachers at the elementary level this year, and that four moves up in the next grade but becomes three in the grade that it's in right now. So you see those kinds of shifts. In addition, there are decreases in English and Spanish based on course offerings and needs. There's a decrease in Mandarin, so it's a .2, so it's a reduction of one of the teachers by .2, which happens to be something that the teacher is happy about in terms of her own scheduling. There is an additional 1.0 because of teaching assistant, because we are anticipating a fifth section of kindergarten at Midland School. I said PE already. There is the new life skills program that has currently been running at the middle school, will be growing to the high school, so we will have middle school and high school life skills. So we have a teacher assistant for the life skill program, and we have the teacher for the life skills program. In addition to ESS, working with our therapeutic support services, we will have a full-time teaching assistant that will be staffing with ESS in the therapeutic program. And there's also a full-time teaching assistant for the life skills program. So that's sort of the overview of where we are with the numbers in terms of additions and reductions, and that's all reflected in the salary component and the contractual for ESS in the other parts of the budget.
This chart depicts how the, what our revenue sources are anticipated for next year in an effort to support the budget. Property taxes, $89,778 million. Other highlights are county sales tax, we anticipate coming in at just a little over a million, utility tax. And the other item that we talk about often when we look at this chart is the anticipated use of fund balance, which is the commitment of fund balance that we have to offset the tax burden. And we're anticipating using $2.3 million to come up with the $99.47 million of budget that we're asking the board to approve tonight.
And so this is just a historical chart showing what the annual budget-to-budget increases are, and obviously, looking at this year is a bit higher than we've had the past number of years. And you know, the inflation is impacting everywhere in terms of costs of services and goods to the school district, but there are also programs that we just feel we cannot push off anymore. The mental health services for kids, the therapeutic support services. If you recall that we've talked about the therapeutic program for two years running now, and both years we tabled it. The mental health needs in the community right now and with our kids are too great to push that off. We did make the decision that we're working with a contracted vendor for that, so it's a year-to-year contract with ESS, and we will see if, and evaluate the need, and see where we are in a year, and come back to the board and say, next year, we agree this is the right path to continue on, or if we need to make that a program with our own staff, we will say that to the board. So it is a tax cap compliant budget, but because of inflation and where CPI is and the exclusions that exist within the budget process, it's the 5.56% budget-to-budget increase, which translated a little differently. So Gabby?
Yep. So how does that translate for taxes, tax levy, and impact? So we anticipate a tax levy increase of 3.97. It's a total tax levy of $89,778,350. Taxable assessments at this time, we anticipate will be $130,813,48, going into the 2022-23 school year, which estimates a tax rate per thousand of assessment of $686.31.93.
And we do have a proposition, it's a tax-neutral proposition. So this is using money that's already on hand. It is reserves for, from the lunch fund reserves, and this is to enhance the HVAC in the high school cafeteria. So there is no cost to the taxpayers. It's a $400,000 transfer from the lunch fund reserve to the capital expenditure for the HVAC. And this is one of the things we talked about when we put the capital bond proposal together a number of years ago, is looking at ways to offset the borrowing that we had to come up with. So we talked about using reserves where we were able to. This was one of those areas that we looked at. We also talked about setting up a capital reserve fund for the future, for any future needs, which, if you all recall, the community approved at the time. So again, it's really important, it'll be a second resolution, so Resolution One will be voting on the budget. Resolution Two is voting in yes or no on this proposition, and it's no cost to the taxpayers and completely tax-neutral. So it has no impact on that, on the 2022-2023 budget itself.
Just to remind everybody how to reach out to the board, Eric, myself, or feedback, maybe not related to the budget, but always looking to hear from people.
And one thing, you know, we sort of quickly go through state aid because we get so little from the state. While the state does not have an approved budget yet, the governor's proposal, we base our state aid funding on the governor's executive proposal and the numbers we get from our elected officials. Last week, the, what are called the one-house budgets were released. That was the Senate's budget, the state senate's budget, and the Assembly's budget, and there was no significant change in funding there. The one thing I will say, and Jen and Jane and I have spoken to lots of politicians about this, there were some shifts in the Senate proposal, and this was direct feedback that we gave to our legislators about the mental health funding that is going to be available. It still will be, based on what the Senate put forth, it still will be a grant-based program, but instead of eliminating schools based on the community socioeconomic status, it will be available to all schools based on proposals that are put in. So it's not a competitive structure. If it goes through, it won't be the competitive structure that often knocks us out of consideration for any additional state funding for anything. So do you know that Shelley Mayer was very responsive to our concerns about that? We still believe that there needs to be more funding for mental health services. I did see a recent announcement that the, I think, is it $2.5 million? The governor announced $2.5 million to set up mental health centers. I'm not sure you can set up a mental health center for $2.5 million, and that's statewide, but it's $100 million in a fund for recovery, COVID recovery, and mental health. We will absolutely have proposals going in for that funding, but that's not part of the state, that's not part of what's allocated to us. We'll have to, you know, put that proposal together and hope for the best.
And then our next stops to May 17th, just mechanically when we're talking about what needs to be done. We will come back on May 3rd for our budget hearing, which is a required budget hearing. And then on May 17th, the budget vote and trustee election. Questions, comments?
We've obviously had an opportunity to hear this several times, and we have been able to go through each of the areas as well with all of the administrators over the last several meetings. I think I'm glad that you pointed out that it's a tax-cap compliant budget, because I think seeing the budget-to-budget increase could make that feel like it isn't, and it is. So I think that's an important piece to repeat and point out. And the other piece I wanted to just reflect back on was the special education expense shift. It sounds, the way you described it, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a lot of, what we've been doing with budget codes over time is trying to align them all in one place so that they are just cleaner, I guess is maybe the word to use. So is that, did I interpret that correctly? It's not a specific increase to a program?
Well, there is, within that, there is some programmatic, but it's not all.
But not all 900,000, yeah.
Right. It's having dedicated funding lines where they belong.
Where they belong. Okay. And that's been something that we've been doing over the years as we can.
Correct. And as things change, just as we are required to report on certain things to SED, and we learn to do it better and to be able to track money better and create budget codes that make more sense, and to consolidate funding and move them around in the budget, yes.
Does anyone else have any specific questions?
I don't have a question. Actually, as you were talking about the nature of a tax-cap compliant budget, we have had a fair number of new citizens, families move into the district, move into the city, and perhaps just a high-level idea about what tax-cap compliant actually means, as it is a cost containment mechanism that is, I think, has a lot of history that I think would be helpful for people to understand and to appreciate, then, what actually a tax-cap compliant budget means.
Right, especially if someone's moved here, say, from New York City where the structure is very, very different. It functions very differently in New York City than it would in Westchester.
And really, from any place other than New York State. As school budgets are not designed in the way in which they are here in the great state of Newark.
Sure. So the basis of how we determine if a, if we choose to be a tax-cap compliant budget is, the very first step is to complete an eight-step calculation based on the current year tax levy, and then you go through multiple different factors that either will get added to or taken away from that starting point that then makes the determination as to whether it's a tax-cap compliant budget. Where I think a lot of the confusion comes in is when the legislation around the tax-cap calculation was implemented, there was a 2% factor that was, is talked about all the time. So people believe that if it's more than 2%, it is automatically not a tax-cap compliant budget. But where the 2% comes into play is, it's the multiplier that you are allowed to use within that eight-step calculation to determine where you're going to land at the end. And that 2%, and specifically for that line, it talks about CPI or 2%, whichever is less. So it cannot, the multiplier cannot exceed 2% as the starting point, but that is never where you land once you actually complete the full calculation.
Right. And actually, when you look at those past years, CPI was much lower than 2%, so it had a lower impact on the ultimate place where you ended up in the tax-cap calculation.
And to your point, if you look at those prior years, it was 2% once, and that was purely by formula and had nothing to do with anything else other than that, and they have all been tax-cap compliant budgets.
Right. And just the history, and please correct me if I'm mischaracterizing it, is that this was set up legislatively as a way to try to give taxpayers, well, taxpayers comfort in knowing that school districts, when they're creating budgets, are not being superfluous in their funds or overreaching, that really this was a mech-
that really this was a mechanism designed to help ensure the cost containment and that costs were really being managed effectively.
So I would say, and it was as a result of, because of the, the development of suburban schools and suburban school districts in the 80s and the early 90s, you would see 10, 12, 13% increases year after year after year. And then the tax cap came. So it was to, to limit, you know, sort of slow the growth even though they know. And, and it's been very challenging for school districts because things are still, healthcare costs don't care about CPI. Healthcare costs have been rising exponentially for years and years and years, and that's a, a cost that we bear. The pension costs, it's mandated by the state constitution, and we have no control over those. That is the number that's given to us every year. And they base that calculation on the five-year average performance of the stock market and if they determine any adjustments are necessary. So you, you've seen increases in the 10% range and higher. There were years where it was in the high 20s. And that, you know, you would absorb your entire growth in your budget just for pension increases. So it was an attempt to slow down the growth and, and make the property tax burden more bearable for community members.
And I think of consistency, right? So in a year where CPI is steady and you're not in inflation, because if you look at the historical data, they are pretty consistent increases year after year. So being the financial person, you like that.
And, and we've, you know, I think we're at a 40-year high in inflation right now, which impacts us greatly in terms of, you know, the fuel costs, the medical costs. All of that is impacting the school budget as well.
So the idea, though, that this is a tax cap compliant is while it is a 5.5, 6%, it is tax cap. It is still falling within those regulations and ideas. And I think that's, you know, certainly in this environment, it's not easy to maintain a tax cap compliant budget, given all of the factors that you've all highlighted. Anyone else?
Couple of things to note. First, very sorry for the ill-timed, dry spot in my throat. I didn't disrupt your, it was an excellent presentation. Just appreciate that. And as Jen already mentioned, you know, there's been weeks of these presentations. So just as my first time going through it, I just wanted to say another thank you to the administrators, everybody, Dr. Byrne and your team. It's so methodically going through this. So for people in the listening, you know, who may just have a lot of questions or starting to see, you know, the budget coming to life, those presentations that go by each section are so helpful and so transparent. So I personally just appreciated that. You know, and also just noting the adjustment from the original budget, sort of relooking at how many people we need to hire and really taking a lens to it to, you know, understand. I, you know, there's, within the tax cap, I guess we could have gone more, but we did pull it back. And so it just, the review process that's been so thorough throughout this, as evidenced by me just going through this for the first time and really learning about it. I just want to say I appreciate, and, you know, just all the time and effort and thoughtfulness and transparency. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. A last note of appreciation to always consistently look at what are the programmatic, programmatic needs for the students. And we can't fulfill all of those all at the same time. However, I think, you know, highlighting even the therapeutic support services that have been on our minds and we're looking at how we can integrate that for the students who need it. Just very appreciative of that always being at the forefront and the challenge that is faced by having to pull it all in at the end of the day, under, to keep under a certain number. So we're, we're fiscally mindful and strong for the future.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we will move to the budget adoption as we get to the consent agenda in a little bit. Oh, yes, I suppose there should be. Anyone have any questions about the budget from the public? Sorry, sorry. I was just going to open it up for regular public comment, too.
Well, let's come forward. I'm not using all of my three minutes in one place.
Okay, so please state your.
I get two, three minutes.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Nancy Pasqual. I live at 131 Purchase Street. And first of all, I want to say thank you for the thing that sits on the wall. Because at the end of the day, that Rye commitment is the lens through which the decisions about what things are the most important get made. As a person who was in the room when that was born, I thank all of you for taking it seriously. So I say that because it matters to me personally, not just philosophically. It matters to me personally. That document matters to me personally. And it's how we're supposed to make decisions. And those decisions get made based on a whole bunch of things, including students, including faculty and staff and what they need, and including members of the community and what they need, including managing costs and making sure that when we make decisions that we can justify them based on a lens that matters to all the people that are the users of our schools. All the people that are the users of our schools. So thank you for that. It matters to me personally intensely. I also just want to say thank you specifically. In the work that I do, it matters to me that, to see that continued support at a time when there is nationally a 40% increase in reports of depression and anxiety nationally. And we see that, we see that in our own local data, which we'll be sharing later. But I would just like to highlight that that local data includes increases of 20% in suicidal ideation for our high school students. It increase, it includes increases in suicidal ideation of 25% for our middle school students. Those are our kids. That support matters because it helps make sure that they get connected to the help that they need. So again, I say that commitment is everything because it makes us, makes, it makes you and it makes us make decisions based on the things that really matter and that we prioritize and that we value and the values that we share. So thank you for honoring it. I also just wanted to ask a quick question, Gabby. You talked before about the debt service increase. And I, in addition to being a community member and a former board member, I happen to also still, I'm a long haul facilities committee member, a former facilities committee chair. We had a meeting last week, and we got to talk a little bit about, about things like debt service. And you talked about that increase in debt service. And you shared with us in the facilities meeting at that time. And I, I just feel like it's important to share with community members. I'm going to try to share, repeat it, but I would love if you could just share that it's important to know that that debt service only includes work that has already been done. Because although, as you noted, there's a tremendous amount of work that's been completed, there's also work that we know is sort of waiting, right? That we're still kind of waiting to have happened, that people were thinking was going to happen at a certain time. And I wonder if you could just speak to that really quickly? Because I feel like it's important for people to know that.
No problem. Yep. So just to remind everyone, the authorization at the time for bonding was 79.9 million. That is the total authorization that the community voted on to allow us to dedicate toward construction and capital projects. To date, we have not borrowed the 79.9. We have only borrowed up to what we have promised, if you will, in bids through Phase Two of our projects. So we sit approximately at the $45 million mark in terms of the monies that we have on hand or have already utilized for work that's already been completed. So to Nancy's point, what you're seeing there is a reflection of only the funding that's been borrowed, but it does not reflect the full 79.9 authorization, which, and it will not until that money is required, meaning that we've gone through the bid process and that we've already committed to the next phases of construction.
I just feel like that's important for people to know as they're thinking and getting ready to vote, that they know that that increase reflects only the things that are done. And that, that bond, the way that that funding was done and that borrowing was done was structured very specifically to take advantage of places where other debt drops off, right? So again, I'm just sharing as a, as a member of that committee that, that that's an important thing that I think people need to be aware of when they're thinking about this budget. That, that even though additional increases will come for debt service, they come at times when other debt service drops off. It was very strategically and well thought out. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you for pointing that out, Nancy. And, and I, one of our previous meetings as part of the presentation, there is a link to a spreadsheet that shows the timing, the anticipated timing of when some of that, that former debt service will decrease and will even out.
So this is, so on this slide, it is a hyperlink to the debt service schedule that we were talking about.
Yes. And as Eric mentioned, it's the, from the original anticipation, we're a little early, but we've been able to complete more earlier. So then that will obviously phase down as we complete more projects over the years. Any other questions from the public about the budget presentation? Okay. Well, thank you. And we will now move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. So we welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address. And if you are representing an organization, to ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I'm going to ask our district clerk to set a timer for three minutes. So if you hear a timer go off, then that would be time to wrap up your remarks. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and privacy, federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. And as a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. So please come forward if you have a question for the board or a comment, sorry.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Caterina Cabrera. I am at Six Hammond Road in Rye, New York. I have four children in the district. And I would ask that, in the spirit of the Rye commitment, where community is highlighted as one of the most important things of our pillars that we think about when we ask for bond money or we ask for tax increases and the community comes together to, say, refurbish Nugent Stadium, that the community can also use it. Meaning, there is a policy, number 7900, which governs the lighting of the stadium. And it seems very overly restrictive and very dated. The lights must go off at 7:30 PM. I don't know a family in Rye that turns their lights off at 7:30. Our children are post-COVID, coming out of it, excited to live again, excited to be at school, excited to be without their masks, play sports. Gym, my son, that's all he talks about, is how much fun he has at gym and how much he loves it. So for him to want to play soccer with his teammates who are on the Rye youth soccer team, who are part of this community, and to get turned away because the field lights are off at 7:30 and they cannot have a friendly scrimmage seems a little hard to accept. I think this policy was written to sort of placate at the time neighbors and members of the community who are very upset about the installation of the lights. But that was 20 years ago. I ask that the policy committee please review the policy and perhaps lighten it up a little. Maybe we can keep the lights on till 8:30, maybe 9. Let's, I don't know. I just would like someone to revisit all 15 bullets because some of them are just a little overly restrictive. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'd love to piggyback on those comments. Before I begin, I just want to thank everyone here for your service. I know it's been a long two years. I really appreciate your leadership and all the time and commitment you've given our community.
Emily, I'm sorry. Can I just ask you to say your name?
Yep.
Just to start. I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
I'm Emily Keenan. I have four kids in the district. And I'm a soccer mom, a soccer coach. I serve on the Rye Youth Soccer Board. And in my free time, I like to read, cook, and fight for field availability anywhere in Westchester County. And I am a pro at this. Like, I have hunted down fields in White Plains for our kids. I have hunted down fields in Porchester for our kids. I have launched fundraising campaigns to buy goals so we can play at Steppenack High School in White Plains. And it's tiring and it's unfortunate because we have fields in this town. But for a variety of reasons, they're just not usable enough for our kids. And I'm here tonight to speak about the field lights at Nugent Stadium. My child also had a game canceled on him this week. He's 11 years old. He was so excited. It was a beautiful day. It's the start of spring. All he wanted to do was put his jersey on and go to the high school. It's super special for those younger kids to get to step out on that high school field. And it was canceled. And I felt sad, but not surprised because I'm sort of used to that at this point, having lived in this town for a decade, unfortunately. But then I was on Facebook that night, and I saw the commentary of the community. And there were a lot of very confused people wondering, why are we turning the lights off on our kids at 7:30? And it galvanized me because I thought, why are we doing that? This is so unfortunate. And beyond the obvious points made about the bond and the burden that this community paid to resurface that field, there's other really important things for us to talk about tonight. What I hope you understand, in addition to the fact that when we turn off those lights, we're, we're turning off the field ability, availability for so many kids, the kids of families who paid, paid those taxes. But what I hope you also understand is, especially right now in March, there are no other fields, literally. There are no other fields for those kids to use. Not one, not one, not one for an organized practice, not one even for a pickup game. They are all grass fields that are closed, most of them until April 18th. So that's still three or four weeks away from now. And this, this weather is beautiful. These kids just want to go outside and play. And the fields are closed. Osborne's going to open hopefully on March 28th, but that will largely be used by the middle school and the high school teams as it should be. Was that three minutes already? The other fields don't open until April 18th. And it's, it's just sad because these kids just want to be outside. And I'll wrap it up. But I will just say, as a community member and as a mother, these last two years have been hard. I'm gratified to hear the attention that's been paid to mental health here tonight. Our kids are in crisis. I'm extremely grateful for Nancy's comments. Dr. Byrne, I appreciated your comments. I appreciated the money that's going into the budget. I just want to point out, a very cheap and easy way to support our kids' mental health is to leave those lights on, let them go outside, let them play with their friends. The science is incredibly clear The science is incredibly clear that being outside with your friends, playing sports is a huge boost to your social and emotional health. So thank you so much for your time. I hope you can revisit these guidelines. They're old and they deserve to be looked at again. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Amanda Timcheck, 61 Osborne Road. Nancy is supposed to be my, my partner up here tonight also, but.
I'm my secretary.
So, so I'm here on behalf of Pride Community Group, Rye Act, Nancy and Rye Youth Council to say thank you to the board and Dr. Byrne for your leadership in sending out the Parenting and Changing Times newsletter that went out. There's a lot of work that went into that behind the scenes, months and months of research. We were so happy to have the support of the administration in sending that out to the wider parenting network. I think as, as someone who does a lot of work in this space, the, the simple facts of being a queer or trans youth in today's world are, are pretty scary. And an accepting school and an accepting community are huge protective factors for those kids. And I think this newsletter goes a long way into helping our community recognize and figure out how to support these kids. So, so thank you for your part in doing that. And while we're here, there, there's a follow-on community conversation that Pride and the GSA from the high school are working on together that we'd like to invite you all to. It's May 18th on the Rye Town Green outside. It's supported by Pride, the Rye Free Reading Room, the Rye Youth Council, Rye Act, GSA, many of the religious institutions in town, the Y, all coming together in a part Pride celebration, part education night about how to be a community that is accepting for LGBTQ+ people. So we hope you all can join us and we thank you for your part in, in moving our community towards the best community it can be. So thank you.
Thank you.
I like six minutes of thank you.
Of course, please.
So again, now I come officially as myself in another capacity. I'm Nancy Pasquale. I live at 131 Purchase Street. I'm also the co-founder and, and coalition coordinator for Rye Act and a founding member of the growing, the positive leadership community, along with Dr. Byrne, actually, that, that organizes youth-serving groups across the community to work together collaboratively. And I also want to say thank you. And I want to say thank you for sending that because sending it matters, right? When we write the words, they only matter if the actions that follow the words are lined up with the words. While many young people who identify as LGBTQ+ go on to adulthood and lead happy, healthy, productive lives, it's well documented in research that youth who identify as LGBTQ+ are at higher risk for many negative health and life outcomes. And these may include substance use, depression, anxiety, eating disorders, non-suicidal self-harm, suicidal ideation, death by suicide, homelessness, high school and college dropout, and bullying. There are a number of protective factors that exist and in their absence become risk factors for those youth. Things like positive identity development and integration, things like outness and cognitive flexibility, but most importantly, the place where we all play a role and where you all play a role when you do the thing that lines up with the thing that says, "We take our responsibility of overseeing the education of our children in an equitable, inclusive environment very seriously." And that what we mean when we say we want to educate kids is that we want them to become socially responsible, caring citizens who can think critically, communicate effectively, collaboratively, and create, and creatively solve problems in a diverse, global environment. So supportive social networks like community groups like Pride and, and school groups like the GSA, which that budget supports, affirming family, affirming peers, affirming faith communities, affirming mentors, community connectedness, visible symbols like pride flags, and sending out newsletters that help provide community members with information and in particular, parents with information. I'm the parent of two white, cisgendered, heterosexual males. They literally reside in every possible majority, privileged category that exists and is known to man for all of the history of time, including just their maleness. But it's not about my kids, just my kids, right? And it's, it's about my kids being good neighbors to their friend, to their peer. My ability to understand a kid who isn't my kid and be a parent to those children and help them be better friends, better neighbors, better teammates, better classmates, is a job that you help enable by sharing information and by doing what you say you mean to do. So again, as someone who loves that document, thank you for having it mean enough to take it seriously and to take the steps that show you mean it.
Thank you. And I have to apologize for smiling when the alarm went off because it just felt like it was emphasizing that last end of, of your statement, so.
For me, a monster zinc character is going to come out and say, "Situation terminated." Does that tell you how old my children are?
Yeah. So what Jane was just saying to me is, just for the folks who came up to talk about the policy, that is actually, has been added to the agenda for the next policy meeting. So that will be revisited and then it will be brought back to a subsequent board meeting and looked at with fresh eyes.
Just as the policy committee took the opportunity for the opt-out policy to be brought forward to the community and then it was brought forward to the policy committee, we find ourselves in the same fortunate position to have a policy committee meeting scheduled for this week. We will take the opportunity to certainly review and revise as necessary the policy and we'll bring it back forward for the full board to have an opportunity for a first discussion. The way our policies work is that we have to have a first discussion, followed by a second discussion two weeks later, and then it becomes a fully adopted policy. We will certainly take a keen eye to the policy, certainly with all of the comments that you made and came to share tonight. So thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I will close the hearing from the public on non-agenda items and move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Vivek Kama, seconded by Jane Anderson. See, Chris isn't here, so nobody's raising their hand. So before we do a final approval, I will just go through each of the sections to make sure there's not any additional questions or comments. Consent agenda general, consent agenda fiscal construction, consent agenda fiscal, consent agenda professional appointments, and consent agenda classified appointments, and special, consent, consent agenda special education. Okay, then can I have a final vote on approving the consent agenda? Six, nothing. So we did just adopt the recommended budget from the superintendent for the 2022-2023 school year. We hope that the community will come and join some of those roadshow opportunities to ask questions and vet any concerns that they might have and make their way out to vote on May 17th. We also, on tonight's consent agenda, approved the appointment of William Meyer as the secondary school assistant principal assigned to Rye High School. So we're, we're thrilled to be able to do that as well. And then we also did accept the retirement of one of our very longtime teachers, Bill Ackerman. It is with sadness that I announce that on tonight's consent agenda, the board accept the, accepted the retirement of longtime Osborne School and Rye Middle School teacher, Bill Ackerman. Mr. Ackerman will retire at the end of June after 31 and a half years in the Rye City School District. He joined the district officially in 1991 as a teacher at Osborne School after serving for six months as a long-term fifth grade substitute teacher at Osborne, thus the half. Over the years, Mr. Ackerman taught both fourth and fifth grades at Osborne School and served as the fifth grade level leader and as the district's grades three through five state test coordinator. He took the latter job so seriously that when fourth grade tests were mandated, he requested a change in assignment to fourth grade, believing he needed to experience the rigors of the test he would be coordinating. He also served on the district's elementary language arts committee, on the elementary school literacy, literacy team, and on the strategic planning action team. Mr. Ackerman was awarded the Board of Education's Extra Mile Award in 2004 for his work as the district's testing coordinator. In 2016, after 25 years at Osborne, Mr. Ackerman moved from Osborne to RMS to become a social studies teacher. And after six years, it is from this position that he is retiring. Prior to coming to Rye, Mr. Ackerman worked as a substitute teacher in the Harrison and Katona Lewis, Lewisboro school districts. Before becoming a teacher, he spent 10 years in the corporate world, working in advertising, marketing, and promotions. Mr. Ackerman has a BA in political science from SUNY Purchase and, and MA in teaching from Manhattanville College. Rye Middle School Principal Joe D. Giovanni said of him, "Bill Ackerman is a dedicated employee who cares about the success of his students and their social, emotional well-being. He always puts the interests of his students first and his passion for history is apparent in all his lessons. Everyone at RMS will miss Bill's willingness to help out and problem solve to serve RMS' students, staff, and parents. Bill is an outstanding colleague and person and is, has been a pleasure working with him." In his retirement letter, Mr. Ackerman said, "It has been a pleasure working my entire educational career in Rye. Thank you and the district for the many opportunities that have been available to me." We wish Mr. Ackerman all the best in his retirement. So next is communications to and from the board. So at this point, we will have the board members that are up for reelection this year announce their intent to seek reelection. So I will go first. I am up for reelection this year and would very much like to seek reelection for another term on the board. It has been a tremendous experience and I feel so fortunate to have been able to work with the group of people that are our administration and to watch how our school district continues to grow and just become better and better all the time. So I would love to still be a part of that if the community will have me. So I, I do intend to run. I will pass it on.
Okay. It's kind of crazy to think that it's already, well, it's like two and a half, two and three quarters, but my term of three years is coming to an end. I started and I had about six, seven months before COVID hit. So it's been a really interesting first term. So to that end, I would like to run for a second term and intend to run for a second term to perhaps have a more traditional opportunity and experience to be a board member, to be able to serve the board in its capacity.
You jinxed it.
I mean, really, could it get more crazy? I don't know. Let's certainly hope not. And if it does, boy, oh, boy. What are we going to be in for?
Where's the wood?
Yes, so to that end, if the community would be interested in having me continue my board service, I'll certainly be interested in continuing to serve the board and the community.
So that's it. We're the only two that are up for reelection. Any other communications to and from the board? I know we had a facilities meeting, but Chris isn't here and I missed it. So do you want to give a little?
So we did have a facilities committee meeting last Tuesday, I think. Yeah. And it was a great discussion with our little team to kind of just review everything that's been going on. And there's quite a bit, having to do with the capital projects, the Hurricane Ida repairs, as well as talking about the transfer to capital, which is one of the lines in the budget that comes up every year and how the general fund continues to support the larger facility projects. And as we stated previously, that really the capital, the transfer to capital money is really to complement the work of the existing construction and bond work, similar to the $400,000 that we're asking with respect to the lunch fund reserve to support the air conditioning in the cafeteria.
Great. And then we did also have a technology committee meeting the following day on Wednesday. And I don't, I don't think Caitlin's here. Oh, there she is, all the way back there. Hi. So we were able to, one of the things that the group did during that meeting was after the previous ones where we identified the goals for our next year, our next five-year plan, we started to identify action items that would go along with each of those goals. So the group that was there that day, we were able to get through two of the goals and then it will be revisiting the rest in our next meeting. Any minutes, anything? No? All right, good. She gave me the thumbs up. Okay. So I think then we can move to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Tom Stein, seconded by Callie Erickson, all those in favor? Six, nothing. So please join us for our next Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022.
Social, emotional learning.
Okay, that's what I couldn't remember.
And public hearing on the.
Public hearing on the budget.
And, no, the veterans exemption.
The veterans exemption.
Oh, right. So we'll notice a public, we'll have a public hearing on, an exemption for, for veterans that's coming before the board as well as.
A modification, right. So modification to the existing exemptions that are being offered, as well as adding an exemption for Cold War veterans.
It'll all be noticed when we put, yes. Okay. Thank you. Good night.